Good morning.
Do you have a button?
I do have a button. I'm not going to push it until the time is right. Good morning, it is 9:00 AM. I would like to welcome you to the July 13th, 2016 City Council Meeting. Let the record reflect that all City Council members and officials are present. If you would please stand and we will have a moment of silence for the Dallas officers and their families and then we will continue with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, today we invoke your special blessings as for us, our community, and ask that you give us individuals the humility which realizes his ignorance and guidance. We also ask your continued blessings on our community as a whole. Knowing the special love we have for our city and its people, deliver us, Lord, from every evil and grant us peace in our day. All these things we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to God, the United States of America, and to your wonderful, righteous hands. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have any proclamations this morning, but we do have a special presentation on the Oyster Reef Restoration Update.
Good morning, for the record Joan LeBeau, Urban Design, and it's my pleasure to introduce Laura Getzelbach, the Senior Marine Scientist from the Nature Conservancy who will update you on this restoration project of the oyster reef.
Thank you Joan. Good morning, Commission and Mayor. Thanks for having me here. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about the results is what I'm going to focus on today of the oyster reefs. And for those of you that haven't seen this before, we've been working with a number of partners, my colleagues Anne Birch and Andrea Graves, as well as the City of Ponte Gorda has been a very strong partner on this project, the Aquatic Preserve Project Program here in this area, and the Charlotte Harbor National Oyster Reef Program, Florida Park Service, the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and Jamie Boswell, who's a local consultant here. So, this is the layout of the reefs. I think some of you have seen this before. We have three sites distributed over about four acres off Tribune Harbor Walk. There's nine reefs in total. We tested out three different types of reef material, loose fossil shell, bagged shell, and mats with recycled shell. We have three reefs of each type. Here's what the materials look like when they were completed, as far as the bags filled, the mats constructed, and the loose shell delivered. So, this is all of the different types of monitoring we've done at the reefs. Quite a long list, I'm going to focus on four. Some things are environmental, just collecting environmental information that can help us interpret our results, especially over time. Other things are, you know, pretty, you know, just basic reef footprint, reef height. And then some things are in the works, we don't have the results yet, the invertebrate use of the reef. All of that information was collected, it's being analyzed in a lab, it's pretty tedious, so it takes some time. And sawfish utilization of the reefs, I will briefly mention that, but it is in the works, we don't have the results yet, but in the next few months we should. I skipped a slide there. So, live oyster density, we were, we did not know what to expect until we actually monitored the reefs and we were very pleased to see that we had lots of, not only spat, which are the larvae once they settle, but many oysters over the, what we call recruits, so they're actually juvenile oysters, over 10 millimeters in size, which is over a quarter inch. So, these are just the recruits. At the bagged shell reefs, we had over 1,300 recruits per square meter of reef. That is just, you know, spectacular. And on the, on the loose shell reefs and bagged shell reefs, also great results, over 500 on the loose shell reefs, and on the mat reefs, over 300, which was, you know, some of the projects up north in the Chesapeake Bay, they consider it success if they get more than 50 oysters per square meter, so we're well above that. Average length, although the mat reefs, for example, had fewer oysters per square meter, they had the largest size of oysters on the reefs. It probably, they have just more room to grow, less competition, 40 millimeters, which is about an inch and a half on average. Pretty good size for eight months. And just to show you, this is the size frequency of oysters on the reef, and the main point here is that there's a good mix of sizes, which is good to see, and there's a lot of young oysters, in particular, on the loose shell reefs and the bagged shell reef, so still settling out on the reef, which is good. This time of year is when the oyster settlement is happening, kind of peters off late in the fall, but, so we're hoping when we do our one-year monitoring, we'll see even more oysters on the reef and bigger sizes. So, this, this is a little bit hard to see, it's small, so I apologize. The upper right map, excuse me, the upper left map is just showing you the, for each reef, what was the number of oysters estimated, and the lower right reef is the reef type. So, I think the main point here is on the Site B, which is right off the stormwater treatment area, we had the most, the highest density of oysters on the bagged shell reef. Over, if you estimate up from the three sampling trays, we had over 1,000 oysters on that reef, which was pretty spectacular. The reefs that didn't do quite as well were the ones under the pier, Site D, and also the most downstream reef. But, you know, this could change over time, this is just an early look, but it is kind of exciting to see the one off the stormwater area. It may be that there's just more water flow there, more, more food, we don't know, but we'll, we'll see over time if that persists. Water bird utilization, we did pre-restoration monitoring and post-installation monitoring, and we found almost 300 birds over a five-month period at the, at the reef site, and only 235 in the previous year. So, we're seeing more birds on the site, about the same number of species. These numbers could change a little bit too over time as we have more data coming in, but it's promising, and what we hear from our volunteers who do the water bird monitoring is they're seeing birds utilizing the reef itself by walking along the top of the reef, so it's good to see. Before I talk about submerged aquatic vegetation, I just want to tell you what we saw with our eyeballs on the invertebrate use of the reef, although we don't have those results in, when we were taking the sampling trays out and looking and straining those to get the invertebrates, they were loaded with all kinds of crabs, small crabs, small little reef crabs, as well as some blue crabs, several species of fish, smaller little reef fish, but it was really exciting to see, and over the next few months, we should actually see the numbers on those results. With submerged aquatic vegetation, we wanted to see if the reefs changed, how seagrass grew around the reefs. The most dramatic result we saw was the rupia species that was there when we put the reefs in. It disappeared and haliduli took its place, both at the control site and the reef site. So, it didn't have anything to do with the reefs, it's just that area in general, haliduli's moving in. It's too really early to tell trends if the reefs are having any impact, positive or negative, on seagrass growth, so over the next several months, we'll know more. Sawfish utilization, last year, the FWC, they looked at how, if sawfish even came over to our site, and they didn't know that, and they found that they did indeed come over to the south side of the river at night, which is great to see. So, this year, we wanted to see if they utilized the reefs and how they utilized the reefs. So, FWC put in a lot more of the listening stations and receivers, and they're in the process of capturing the juvenile sawfish putting receivers on them, as well as going out and collecting the data from their listening stations. So, we'll know more, I think, early next year, what the results are of that, and we're, we're keeping our fingers crossed, it'll be really good news. And just as sort of observational information, almost immediately after the reefs went in, within a couple of months, the aquatic preserve staff were out there and they saw three-foot sawfish on the reef, just, just adjacent to the reef, so that was really good to know. So, instead of answering questions right at this moment, Arlene Beaumont, who's a project volunteer and City of Ponte Gorda resident, is going to talk a little bit about her experience working on the project.
Hi, how are you? Good morning. I started on this project right from the beginning. I read about it in the Harbor Style Magazine, and I contacted Kate Aug, who was our contact person, and got involved. So, that's two and a half years since. So, I've been involved in every phase of it, and it is gratifying. So, I just wanted you to know that there are citizen volunteers out there that are very involved in this community. I even have a shirt. Right now, I do the water monitoring once, once a month, and I go out there and I test the temperature, the specific gravity, to get the salinity, and we're going to see if that affects the growth of the oysters. Any questions about it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question. Is it, do you have any opinion as to whether the larger oysters or the greater number is one or the other is better for the ecosystem?
So, oysters are great for the ecosystem, they provide food and habitat for fish and invertebrates. Some of those fish are, are commercially harvested, which is good to know, and they also clean the water, they help stabilize shorelines, many, many good things. Charlotte Harbor had probably 80% more oyster reefs before all of us moved into the state, so it's, it's, it's good to bring them back to the, the system. So, yeah, I don't know of any adverse impacts that oysters have.
No, my question was, I presume that the bagged shells is less labor-intensive than the mats?
Yes, and, and the loose shell even more so, and the bagged shell, the early results seem to indicate that they produce the most oysters per square meter, so.
Right, so, and the mats, you said, produce the larger size?
Yes.
So, what would be the preferred solution if you had to choose, or maybe it's too early, with respect to the restoration of oysters? The larger size or the more numerous?
I think that maybe on the mats, they grew faster earlier, but over time, I think the bagged shell will, will see growth. We, we, right now, most of the oysters we're seeing are within the bag, but I think eventually the oysters will also be growing on the bag and around the bag, and then they'll have a chance to get, you know, to the larger size. One thing I didn't mention is that the largest ones we're seeing are about three and a half inches, which is pretty darn good for eight months, so, good to see that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, question about the seagrasses, you mentioned a change in seagrass, and I have no idea what those seagrass are, I suppose most people here don't either, so can you tell us what the significance is?
Well, so, rupia, which was the first seagrass that we saw, and, and just to let you know, we didn't see any seagrass at the site when we first conceived of the project, and it moved in, which caused the delay in our project. Rupia is considered sort of a transient species that comes and goes, so haliduli moving in is actually a good thing, because it's a more stable seagrass that tends to stick around. So, it may just be that that site, for no reason to do with the reefs, is just becoming more of a seagrass dominant area rather than just mud flat, so.
Is moat, marine participating with you guys in any fashion?
We, we haven't had them as a partner yet, not to say that we wouldn't in the future, because I know they do have a big presence here in southwest Florida.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, if your name has been submitted to a City Border Committee and you would like to take a few minutes to introduce yourself, now would be the time. There's any border committee nominees in the audience who would like to introduce themselves. Okay, seeing none, we will move into our public hearing agenda, and we have one public hearing.
Yes, well, this is a, the second reading of a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida approving the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan for the City of Ponte Gorda and authorizing the city manager to sign and submit all documents required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and provide an effective date.
We have any, this is the second public hearing on the CDVG Block Grant Action Plan? Any comments? Okay, this is a public hearing, if you would like to speak on the CDVG Action Plan, please come to the podium, state your name, you will have three minutes. This is a public hearing on CDVG, if anybody would like to speak, please come to the podium. Last call.
We have to close public hearing.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Now, we have two quasi-judicial hearings, so at this time, we will have the clerks swear in, any participants for both?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone offering testimony today, if you'd please stand, or stand and raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
First item is SE-03-16, which is a request for a special exception by Jerry Waxler, Agent for Peace River Baptist Church, property owner pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 16.8, Ponte Gorda Code, to allow the expansion of the church used by constructing an additional parking lot, associated landscape buffer, and associated store-mortar management facilities on property described as Track A, Ponte Gorda Estates, with future additional parking, associated landscape buffer, and associated store-mortar management facilities on Tracks B, C, and D, Ponte Gorda Estates, as depicted on Exhibit A, attached Tier 2, and which is owned neighborhood residential, 10 units per acre, as such use is permitted by special exception pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 3.7, F2, Ponte Gorda Code.
Good morning, for the record, Terry Tubbs, Urban Design, and I have been sworn. Yet this request for the special exception allows the church to do, have more permanency in their additional parking that is needed. They are providing the landscape buffer. Urban Design staff and Planning Commission do recommend approval of their request. The one neighbor to the north had requested that the existing sidewalk that was going to be a trailhead be removed, and they have agreed to that request from the adjacent property owner.
Any questions for today? Okay, this is a public hearing, if you would like to speak on SE-03-16, please come to the podium, state that you've been sworn, your name, and.
Good morning, Jerry Waxler with the McCrory Law Firm, I have been sworn. I'm here this morning representing the Peace River Baptist Church, which is requesting a special exception so that it can expand its parking lot for the church that's been there for many decades. There are four criteria for a special exception. First is that there is no adverse impact on neighbors. There are no new structures that are proposed here, other than pavement and striping and a stormwater manage, uh, management area, so there will be no new traffic, no new pedestrian impacts. We have, as you can see from the site plan, there are buffers that will be planted along and around all of the development area, and all the neighbors have been approached and have no objection to the special exception. The second is that the special exception complies with all regulations. A church and its accessory uses is expressly permitted by special exception in the NR10 zoning district, so this is allowed by the regulations, and the comp plan identifies houses of worship as a compatible use on residential land, so long as there's compliance with the LDRs. And this has been reviewed by your Development Review Committee, which had no objections and no comments, because the design is compliant with your LDRs. The third requirement is that it will not hinder or discourage development of adjacent land. Pretty much all the adjacent land is already developed, so we don't see that it would cause any problems, and the church, as I said, has been a staple and, and a fact in this neighborhood for many, many years. And the fourth requirement is that traffic that is generated by, as a result of the request of the special exception, will not create hazardous conditions. There will be no new traffic generated, they're not adding any space to their church, so the same number of people that have always attended the church will attend, they just will now have much better parking options. We believe that this does comply with all the requirements of your LDRs for granting a special exception, and we would respectfully request that you approve it. I am here, along with the project engineer and Harry Agabides, who's a representative of the church, and the project engineer is John Swin with Charlotte Engineering, if you have any questions, we're available. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak on SE-03-0-16? Public hearing, would anybody like to speak on this special exception? Last call.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval, SE-03-16.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve SE-03-16. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Next is SV-01-16, this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida vacating those undeveloped right-of-way lying in a portion of Section 7 Township 41 South, Range 23 East, and Section 12 Township 41 South, Range 22 East, Charlotte County, Florida, commonly known as a portion of Chastain Street lying west of West Charlotte Avenue, and that portion of Charlotte Avenue lying between McKenzie Street and Chastain Street, containing 30,706 square feet, or .70 acres, and more particularly described in Exhibit A, attached Tier 2, and made a part hereof, and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Good morning, for the record, Terry Tubbs, Urban Design, and I have been sworn. This request basically makes permanent their current occupation of right-of-way, they currently do occupy this portion of Charlotte Avenue, which was approved by an occupation of the right-of-way, as well as a portion of Charlotte Avenue that is an undeveloped area, and so they are requesting the vacation of that. The other one half would go to the adjacent property owner for the, I'm sorry, Chastain Street side over here. Planning Commission and Urban Design staff do recommend approval as it facilitates their need for the additional parking.
Questions for Terry?
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, if you would like to speak on SV-01-16, please come to the podium, state your name and that you've been sworn.
Again, Jerry Waxler, McCrory Law Firm, I have been sworn, I'm here on behalf of Peace River Baptist Church. As Ms. Tubbs indicated, this simply will make permanent the occupation of easement that has been in place for a number of years. Improvements have already been made in the area that's requested for vacation, the new improvements will be the stormwater management facility that will allow construction of the expanded parking area. We would respectfully request approval. Thank you.
Anybody else to speak on SV-01-16? Last call.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval of SV-01-16.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve SV-01-16. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next, we have a couple second readings, which are not public hearings. So, at this time, if you would like to speak on those second readings, now would be the time. It would be GA-06-16, SV-02-16, ZA-08-16, and ZA-09-16. If you would like to speak on any of those ordinances, now would be the time. Please come to the podium, state your name, you will have three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we will move into GA-06-16.
Thank you, this is the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only, an ordinance of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida relating to the calling of a referendum election, and consider amendments to the Charter of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, proposed by the City of Ponte Gorda Charter Review Committee, providing findings which include the proposed charter amendments, providing for the calling of a referendum election, providing for the conduct of a referendum election, providing the form of ballot, providing for the form of notice of referendum election, providing for the posting of ordinance at each polling place, providing for filing with the supervisor of elections, providing for severability, and providing effective date.
Thank you, any comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval, GA-06-16, second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve GA-06-16. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Just want to remind everybody that these charter review recommendations will be on the November ballot, please get out and vote, very important. And next, we have SV-02-16.
Thank you, this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida declaring its intent to consider vacating that undeveloped right-of-way lying in Section 1 Township 41 South, Range 22 East, Charlotte County, Florida, being an unimproved 10-foot alleyway lying southeasterly of lots A, B, C, D, and E, and northwesterly of lots F and K, a subdivision of lots 1, 2, 7, and 8, Block 9, Town of Tribune, Florida, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 1, page 23 of Public Records of Charlotte County, Florida, containing 1,870, excuse me, 1,847.3 square feet, and more, more or less, and more particularly described in Exhibit A, attached Tier 2, and made a part thereof, requesting a recommendation from the Planning Commission and fixing a public hearing hereon.
Okay, this is the second reading, any changes?
This is the first reading.
Oh, this is the first reading of the resolution, okay. Any comments or questions on the vacation? No?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, any opposed? Carried unanimously.
Let me just point out, this is a part of the process where you declare your intent to consider.
Okay.
So, now it goes through the process with a recommendation from the Planning Commission to come back for ultimate approval at that time.
Okay, thank you. ZA-08-16.
Yes, this is the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, amending Ponte Gorda Code, Chapter 26, Land Development Regulations, Article 3, Regulating Districts, Section 3.8 Neighborhood Commercial District, Section 3.9 City Center District, Section 3.10 Highway Commercial District, Section 3.11 Special Purpose District, amending subsections C, Uses Permitted With Conditions, Adding Mobile Food Dispensing Vehicles as a Use Permitted With Conditions on Developed Property, and amending subsections F, Special Exceptions, Removing a Special Exception Approval Requirement for Mobile Food Dispensing Vehicles in any zoning district, amending Article 4, Uses Permitted With Conditions, Subsection 4.40 Mobile Home, excuse me, Mobile Food Dispensing Vehicles, Subsection A, to remove reference to watercraft from the definition, amending subsections B1, F1, and F11, to remove special exception requirements for the Mobile Food Dispensing Vehicles, providing for conflict and severability, providing effective date.
Anybody have comments?
Discussed them a lot, so.
We've been through the mobile food dispensing ordinance several times, so this is removing...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve ZA-08-16. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
And next is ZA-09-16, the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, amending Ponte Gorda Code, Chapter 26, Land Development Regulations, Article 3, Regulating Districts, Section 3.13 Special Residential Overlay District, Subsection L, Storage of Vehicles and Watercraft, to clarify provisions for the storage of watercraft inside a garage or carport, providing for conflict and severability and provi, and providing effective date.
Anybody?
No.
No.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve ZA-09-16. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next, we move on to the consent agenda, so we have two items. Anybody wish to pull any of those, one of those two? No?
No. Move approval of the consent agenda.
We need citizen comment. Citizens' comments on consent agenda items, which would be approval of CPH for the redesign of Ponte St. Leon Park, or the other consent agenda item. Or the other consent agenda item is the EAR-based amendments for the comp plan. If anybody would like to speak on any of those two items, now would be the time. Seeing none, now I will entertain Tom's motion.
Move approval of consent.
And we have a second. So we have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Howard?
So on the August 24th council meeting, we'll bring back to you a design contract for you to approve so that we can start the redesign of Ponce Park to include the Wildlife Center.
How long do you think that process is going to take? We don't know?
We haven't sat down with the designer.
Okay.
I have a question about that. So what happens if they don't raise the funds to build this and just make it park?
It will be parked.
State your name, please.
Pat Campagna, President, Peace River Wildlife Center. I want to thank you all. I don't—we don't anticipate a problem raising the funds. We have already raised half of them, and we haven't even gone public with our capital campaign. So now that we have a home, we will start aggressively pursuing raising the rest of the funds.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. Yeah, that's great.
Okay, now we're going to move into the regular agenda. So if you would like to speak on any of these items—
At this point, just the budget, because that's the regular agenda of the city council. And then when we open up the individual districts—
Okay.
—we'll have the option.
Then should we just open it up down here too for unfinished business?
Sure.
Okay. So this is what we're going to do. We're going to now have citizens' comments on this one budget agenda item, which is the resolution for adopting the proposed millage rate for the City of Puntagorda, Florida. We're going to have comment on that. And then what's going to happen, when we have to do the canal assessment districts, we have to recess and reconvene, then we'll take public comment. We have to do that each time, even for the lot mowing district, we have to do that. And then when we get down to unfinished business, we'll take—and we'll take public comment on those items at that time. Does that sound less confusing? Okay, good.
Good job.
Okay. So right now, if you would like to speak on the resolution to adopt the proposed millage rate, now would be the time to speak on that item. Anybody want to speak on that item? Okay, seeing none, we will move into the resolution.
Yes, this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City of Puntagorda, Florida, adopting a proposed millage rate for fiscal year 2016, 2017, setting a date, time, and place of public hearing to consider final adoption of the millage rate and providing an effective date.
Mayor, there is no presentation this morning. This is just a slideshow that moves along addressing the resolutions.
Okay. How many slides?
This is just the presentation for the millage rate one, that the current resolution says that we will maintain a millage rate of 3.1969. It does balance the budget using additional reserves. It does maintain current service levels. It will continue funding the paving program, and it will begin funding the drainage program.
Everybody on board with that?
Move approval.
Second.
We'll put on the next, it's not really moving approval of this today.
It's moving approval of the resolution.
Yes.
Not to exceed?
Right. Moving approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution for the proposed millage rate. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, now we will—
Recess as the city council—
We're recessing.
—and convene as the Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District.
Okay, so now I would like to call to order the Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District, and we have a resolution, and we will take public comments on that resolution at this time. If you would like to speak on the tentative levy of the annual special assessment for the Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District, now would be the time. Please come to the podium. After you've stated your name, the timer will start, and you will have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Ian Millen. I'm the Vice President of Burnt Store Isles Association. The President of the Association, John Gruca, wanted to be here to make comments concerning the dredging project, but he couldn't be here, so he wrote all his comments down and asked me to read them. So I'll do that. There are times when we must do things that, at the time, seem unpopular. Now, we all agree that perimeter canal dredging needs to be done. Most of us feel it needs to be done, needs to be completed at one time to have an effective dredge versus different start and stop times over years. We need to start and complete in line with a bathometric study, which has a two-year effective time. If not, that $25,000 paid will have no value. There have been unconfirmed reports by a small group of concerned citizens that there is a large percentage of canal property home and lot owners against this plan. This is incorrect. In turn, many complaints have come forward as to the tactics used to get these erroneous percentages. I, for one, and the many owners that have called to convey the unsafe perimeter canal operation, feel we must do this project now. It's past the point of who said what. This is a safety issue and must proceed as soon as possible. God forbid if we had a major boating accident with this money issue now being the stumbling block. I know how I would feel personally. I believe in the knowledge, expertise, and dedication of the Canal Advisory Committee. I believe in our city council to set and fully understand the budget of our canal system in Burnt Store Isles. Again, we must do things that are, at times, unpopular. Safety of our homeowners and neighbors is the most important issue. Thank you. John Gruca, President of the Burnt Store Isles Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on the Burnt Store Isles Canal Assessment District? Please make your way to the podium.
Bill Hughes, Chairman of the Burnt Store Isles Canal Assessment. Based on your comments of last week and the presentation we gave, we hope you will be able to carry out the positive vote in support of our recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Would anybody else like to speak on the Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment Okay, seeing none—
I'd like to move approval.
I have to, I have to read, yeah, you can close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing? Okay, I need a motion.
Move to close the public hearing.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Okay, so I'm going to read this resolution by title only. A resolution adopting a tentative levy of annual special assessment for the Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District for fiscal year 2016, 2017, setting a date, time, and place of public hearing to consider final adoption of the assessment and providing an effective date.
And that final hearing is—
September 7.
September 7 at 5:01 PM.
And I'd like to move approval. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. So now we—
Now we adjourn as the Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District and reconvene as the Puntagorda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District.
Okay, so we're adjourning the BSI Canal Maintenance District, and now we will reconvene as the PGI Canal Maintenance Assessment District. And now at this time, we will take public comment on that resolution for the PGI Canal Maintenance Assessment District. If you would like to speak on the PGI Canal Assessment, now would be the time. Okay, seeing none, we will move into the—
Close the, close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
We need a motion to close the public hearing. We have one.
A second.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
So now I'll read the title of the resolution. A resolution adopting a tentative levy of annual special assessment for the Puntagorda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District for fiscal year 2016, 2017, setting a date, time, and place for the public hearing to consider final adoption of the assessment and providing an effective date.
And the time of the meeting?
It is September 7, 2016, at 5:01 PM.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments on the canal assessment?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, now we will adjourn as the PGI Canal Maintenance Assessment District and reconvene as the City of Puntagorda Lot Mowing Assessment District.
And we'll open the public hearing.
And now, this is a public hearing. So if you would like to speak on the resolution on the lot mowing assessment, now would be the time. Would anybody like to speak on the lot mowing assessment? Seeing none, all—
Move to close the public hearing. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
And so this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution adopting a tentative levy of annual special assessments for the City of Puntagorda Lot Mowing Assessment District for fiscal year 2016, 2017, setting a date, time, and place of public hearing to consider final adoption of the assessment and providing an effective date. And this too would be September 7, 2016, at 5:01 PM.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution for the lot mowing assessment district. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. So now we will adjourn as City of Puntagorda Lot Mowing Assessment District, and we will reconvene as the Puntagorda City Council. Welcome back.
All these meetings.
All these meetings this morning.
Oh, gosh.
Okay. Now we will take citizens' comments on unfinished and new business. Basically, the rest of the agenda here. So if you want to speak on the BSI Underground Straw Ballot, the Harbor Walk Interactive Signage, the renewal of the odor control contract, the discussion of the utility impact fees as applicable to residential versus non-residential, the new City of Puntagorda website, or the development on the West Henry Street property, now would be the time to speak on any of those items. Come to the podium, state your name, and you will have three minutes.
Good morning. Jerry Waxler, on behalf of Tag Development LLC and Tag Creekside LLC, which is developing a recreational vehicle park on Jones Loop Road, immediately adjacent to the old rest area. The park is located in Charlotte County, but it is serviced by the City of Puntagorda. I'm here to speak on the utility connection fees. The park was approved, it was rezoned to recreational vehicle park by the Board of County Commissioners. That zoning district allows only for recreational vehicle park use. It does not allow for any permanent residences. You cannot have a park model, RV, in an RV park district in Charlotte County, and you may only stay on a non-permanent basis. Permanent is defined in state statutes as six months or less, and so Charlotte County follows that in its regulations by saying that in the RVP zoning district, a recreational vehicle may not be present in a park for more than six months. Park was designed, its infrastructure, its utility infrastructure is designed as commercial, but when they went to pay the impact fees, they were told that there is only two categories, residential and non-residential, though that is not defined in your utility connection fee code. We'd asked for clarification, and I know that the city attorney did provide his opinions on how that ought to be clarified, but I'd like to offer an alternative to that. I looked at the entirety of your land development regulations, and while you do not define residential versus non-residential use in your utility impact fee code, you do define it in your regular impact fee code. In that section, residential development in Chapter 11, Section 11-5 is defined as, quote, "residential development, shemling development of a structure or structures solely dedicated to the housing of a person or persons to live, cook, and/or sleep within on a permanent basis, as either owner, renter, or lesssee, provided, however, that adult congregant living facilities, retirement homes, nursing homes, and other structures operated by social service organizations to provide residential care to the children, the age, the destitute, and the physically, mentally, and/or emotionally challenged shall be considered to be a non-residential development as defined herein." So the key phrase in your impact fee code is "on a permanent basis." Very clearly, this RV park cannot house residential structures, although RVs are used as dwelling units, on a temporary basis. We think that, as you look at how to assess utility connection fees, if you're going to assess impact fees for all other impacts to an RV as a non-residential use because it is not permanent, that ought to be consistent when you look at the impact fees that you assess for utility connection, utility connection fees, and that that also ought to be treated as a non-permanent use, a non-residential use. And that's what we would ask that you do today. Thank you very much.
You'd like to speak on unfinished or new business, please make your way to the podium. You can make your way to be the next speaker if you would like to help us out this morning. It's appreciated.
Good morning. My name is David Anthony. I'm the project manager for Creekside, and I wanted to give you folks a little history as to how it was developed utility-wise. I have done developments with the City of Puntagorda in the past with utilities, and the first thing that I did was go and meet with the utility department to sit down and see how they would want this engineered. And they very specifically guided me in the direction of a commercial business. And the big difference is, in a residential utility design, you have your fire hydrants and your water supply all in one line. In a commercial, you do a separate fire line, and then you design the commercial development based upon its usage, and that determines the size of your water line, which determines the size of your water meter, which then determines the amount of your impact fee, and then also what you pay for water in sewer and how you pay for it. So we had very good discussions on that, and banks engineering, and we sat down with Steve and the staff and went through and did a design, which they approved based upon the commercial. So we did our entire business plan based upon the commercial development, which it is. We are no different than a hotel. Ninety percent of our business, like a hotel, will be January, February, and March, will be basically vacant in the summertime. There'll be small business, of course, but not a lot. But the crux of it is, is the whole development was based upon the design of a commercial development. And that's, that was the way we developed it. That's the utilities, that's the way it was permitted, and that's the way we designed our business plan. So we certainly appreciate your consideration in that manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
When the item comes up, if we have questions, we may call on somebody to answer them at that time.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody to speak on unfinished or new business? Make your way to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Frank Chec-Petricino, Chairman of the Underground Wiring Committee of Burnt Store Isles, speaking on Section 9, Item A, unfinished business. Mayor Keesling, council members, City Manager Howard Kunic, Executive Assistant Mikel Finkel, City Clerk Karen Smith, and respective staffs. It is truly right and just that the Burnt Store Isles Association, the property owners within Burnt Store Isles, and we, members of the aforementioned committee, sincerely within Burnt Store Isles, and we, members of the aforementioned committee, sincerely thank you for your time, efforts, and guidance to provide an avenue whereby our Burnt Store Isles community may explore the feasibility of providing a more modern, safe, and reliable method of receiving Florida power and light electricity by way of an underground wiring system. We view the intent of our goal as providing the continual improvement of the neighborhood, to foster good fellowship, to provide the health, safety, and well-being of the residents and owners of Burnt Store Isles. As our committee embarked on this project in January of two thousand fifteen, there was and is only sincerity in our hearts and in our minds that these traits were the guiding light by which we conducted our educational and information seminars throughout the year, using written materials and verbal communication to property owners of Burnt Store Isles. We are grateful to be here today, and thank you in advance for considering our Burnt Store Isles underground wiring project as worthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak on unfinished or new business? Please make your way to the podium.
Greetings. I'm Anthony Farhead. I'm with PGI Homes, and I'm here about the Henry Development Project. Just to give you kind of a brief, hold on one second, sorry. This is the eleven-acre piece by the New Future Library on Henry Street, where the dog park's currently located. We submitted, from the RFP with White Peterman Properties and PGI Homes, a proposal for a low-density, single-family neighborhood. After careful consideration, we believe, although perhaps counterintuitive to the development business, that a lower-density project was best suited for the surrounding environment. We also put a high importance on the dog park. We appreciate how important that is to the neighbor, neighbors around and the surrounding community. We added a hundred and thirty thousand dollar donation back to the city to be used, however the city deems responsible, to improve the dog park, perhaps even relocate to another place close by. It would be done in two phases. Phase one would consist of up to six model homes and twenty single-family residences, at which time we would also construct sidewalks and walkways along Maud and Henry Street. All those paths would ultimately go back to linear park path and also the library. Phase two would complete the balance of a total of fifty-four homes for the entire project. If approved, the project, in addition to improving the dog park, would also bring an estimated three hundred and seventy to four hundred thousand dollars in additional tax revenue. White Peterman and PGI Homes have been partners for many years, PGI acting as the local home builder in this particular relationship. White Peterman, to give you some background, has developed single-family subdivisions, condominium projects, and over a hundred hotels and six thousand apartments throughout the United States, a well-capitalized organization. They've brought PGI in, understanding that it's important to have a local home builder in a project like this, and again, we believe that the lower density was the more appropriate path to develop this. So John Peterman with White Peterman is the principal. He is also here, if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else to speak? Make your way. Make your way to the podium. You can line up if you wish.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Larry Lamore, and before, too, coming to Punta Gorda, I was director of research for the U.S. Department of Education, and prior to that, I worked at the Census Bureau International Center for Educational Statistics. I'm a statistician, so I'll be very honest, it's going to be technical. I'm here to speak on, on the recent straw poll regarding the BSI Burnt Store Isles underground electric system. The straw poll, which recently was closed, indicated that about one-third of the people or property owners were in favor of underground or proceeding, let's put it that way, proceeding to the next level, and one-third were opposed, and one-third never voted, non-votes, and that becomes very important in this situation. The other thing I'd like to point out is that the Burnt Store Country Club is the largest property owner in the affected district, and it had one vote. In two thousand four, when the last time this was voted on, the country had, club had sixteen votes, and that was based on the fact it has ten water meters, and it pays about a hundred thousand dollars a year in electric bill. And it also sits on six lots on Madrid Boulevard with only one address, and we only got one vote, and that vote was no. The second thing is that we have property owners, because we looked at the ballots, in there who own multiple lots, many lots, and they had multiple votes, as opposed to the Country Club with one vote. We don't think that was fair at all. Secondly, the question becomes, what is the possibility, if it went to the next level, of it being passed? Under Florida statute, the citizens, you know, property owners in Burnt Store Isles have to ratify the district by a positive vote. In other words, people who don't vote are no votes. It has to be a positive vote by Florida statute. Given the fact that one-third is in favor, and two-thirds, if you look at it that way, are against it, the possibility of the special tax district passing is about zero, statistically speaking. And we, I believe that that's probably what'll happen. The last time, in two thousand four, this was voted on. The vote was sixty percent against, forty percent in favor. I think that'll repeat itself. Statistically, things, this company don't change that much. We think it changes a lot. It doesn't, and the history will show that. And so therefore, we, I firmly believe it'll be about the same level. The question is, do, does the city of Punta Gorda want to spend staff time and resources and finance something that is almost doomed from the beginning? That's my, that's my, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you. Not a missed time. Thank you. Anybody else to speak? Make your way.
Good morning. I'm Bradford Gamblin, a Punta Gorda Isles resident, Punta Gorda resident, and this, I'm speaking with regard to new business, item ten C, the Henry Street development. I have a problem with this, in that there is limited property available for parks, especially in that area, where we are now placing the library and other facilities, the dog park, et cetera. Once that space is gone, it's gone for good, and I know of no city in the United States, there probably are some, but most cities take great pride in their park space, and here we are giving up eleven acres, city-owned property for a development. This is the first signs I've seen elsewhere of out-of-control development, and I'm for development, and people, developers that own property, they should be allowed to develop it, no question about that. This is our property, as citizens of this city, and why we should give it up, I, I don't know. So far as the tax base improvement's concerned, how many houses were built in Burnt Store Isles and PGI this last year, adding to the tax base of our commit, our, our community? Quite a few. Think of the future. This is a quality of life issue. We are, right now, there's, I heard the Howard mention even last meeting, that there's a noise issue with the pickleball courts. What if there are more pickleball courts wanted? There's really very little room left down on the park, face near the water. This would be an ideal use for that type of facility. There would be adequate parking, instead of cars parked all over the grass and everything in that area on the park. Do we need more homes for the tax base? Sure, but do we have to give up city property for it? I don't think so at this time. A community center location would be another possible use. We've already heard discussions about that, and how, how should we sacrifice quality of growth for future growth with development of what could be potentially eleven acres? We've already taken land for the library, and there are other uses they could be put to that we don't even know of at this time. I do not, I'm opposed, I do not see the value in taking park land, potential park land, for a development. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move into unfinished business, and the first item is the BSI undergrounding straw ballot result.